Bend the rules.
The move.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gaines. If the clerk would, uh, excuse me. Any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a 4-0 vote. The clerk would read those changes, please.
To the consent agenda, we're adding 5Q resolution for a third amendment with S.G.K. landscapes for highway remedification, adding 5R resolution, amending resolution number 81621 pertaining to Cedar Lake Bridge, and on the routine, adding a docket in the amount of $9,444.63.
Thank you all. Entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
The move.
By Mr. Lawrence, the second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a 4-0 vote. All right. It, I, I do want to announce, or just make it known, that after following citizens' comments, I expect there to be a motion and a second to go into executive session, so I just want to give folks a heads up there. All right, that brings us to the presentation agenda. The mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We have a lot to, uh, to report on today, but I do want to mention a couple of things about our, uh, an item in our first reading, but, you know, I hope everyone is getting ready for, for Thanksgiving, and I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving. But, uh, on your, uh, for consideration, this first reading, is the, uh, the items regarding compensation. Now, to give you a little background, as George, I think, had asked about three months ago, right before the FY '21 budget, to see if we could research and see if we can get 3% raises to our employees, you know. Our employees, we've always felt that they make or break our, our organization and, and the city, and the city services, so we've been researching that for the last two and a half months. Part of the, uh, consideration is the restructuring, simplification of the compensation schedule by grades. We expect to do, um, a workshop, I think, to get to the nuts and bolts, the details for every grade and for every part of this, uh, resolution. So, um, that's all I really needed to say at this point in time, and I'm happy to provide the information that, uh, will, you know, prepare us for this workshop individually or collectively without, you know, violating anything. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't see any departmental reports. That'll bring us to the council report. Mr. Lawrence?
I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, enjoy a few days off with your family, y'all have a good time.
Yeah.
That's enough.
That was amazing, actually.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. That was amazing, actually. Mr. Gaines?
Yeah, I'd like to echo the same thing, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Also, I would like to see, um, C.A.O., Mike Leonard, after the meeting. And at this point, at this time, I would like to, uh, yield my remaining time to, uh, Mr. Wayne Hingen, attorney.
Thank you. I am Wayne Hingen, I'm an attorney in Biloxi. My offices are at 979 Howard Avenue. I represent the Original Beignet Factory LLC. It does business, as you know, as Le Cafe Beignet. I'm here because there are several issues that, that regard the lease that it has with City of Biloxi. Number one, the city has not installed additional utility meters. It's been required for about 14 months. Le Cafe has had to pay the utility for the entire building, including the first-floor tenant that took occupancy back in October of last year, and so far, those bills total $10,500 that she's paid. Number two, no repairs have been made to the walls and the roof. When it rains, it pours inside. The exterior kitchen of the other tenant has taken over common and parking areas that are for both tenants and created a nuisance. It also posted a "no parking" sign at the parking area. Number four, the city's tax bills for the library have been sent to Le Cafe. The total for 2019 and 2020, and this is as of last summer when she first saw these bills, is over $18,000. I considered a mutual mistake in the drafting of the lease that it was left in. Uh, Le Cafe is only a tenant, it's not the owner of the property. The other tenant continues to use an area exclusive by lease to Le Cafe. They violate the sign provision in that area, and it's the provision in his lease that restricts where he can put a sign and how that can be done. Also found several incidences where he actually, or his employees hustle Le Cafe's customers as they're trying to enter her business, and he uses their dumpster, Le Cafe's dumpster. These are all breaches by the terms of the lease that the city drafted for Le Cafe. Notice has been sent since July, actually several notices have been sent since July of this year from my office alone. There are also other matters adversely impacting Le Cafe and affecting some kind of equitable and fair, um, atmosphere that ought to take place between these two tenants. They're in the same building. Le Cafe is paying $4,200 per month for the second floor. The other tenant's rent is $2,000. That was set for the other tenant 11 months after Le Cafe's, uh, lease. No security deposit was required by the other tenant, and its kitchen is outside on a trailer some 50 feet from the building, unlike all the surrounding restaurants and the requirements that they had to meet. The business of that other tenant is on the ground floor. Next, Le Cafe spent over $19,000 renovating the second floor, all without any help from the city. The other tenant told the city it would cost him $32,000 to renovate, so the city gave the tenant a credit of $1,500 a month on the rent that he would otherwise pay, for a total of $32,000. Its rent with the credit is actually $500 from the first time he took possession in October of last year, while Le Cafe is still paying $4,200 with no credit for renovations. Next, the other tenant has control of the entrance and the area near the elevator that leads to only one place, Le Cafe. Next, Le Cafe has experienced power outages and breaker problems since the other tenant took possession. These shut down Le Cafe, and it's been shut down a number of times because of these things, and it signals, to me it signals, it should to everyone, a very dangerous situation. Seda LaCap, who is here today, is the owner of Le Cafe and works hard to make it a success. As a result, it's, I've seen it, at the top of several lists. When I've been there, it's been packed. The breaches and other matters have created considerable unnecessary effort and an unfair expense to this business. For months, Le Cafe has given the city notices, that was back during the spring and even before the end of last year, but nothing was done. It became necessary for her to employ an attorney for the enforcement of the terms of the lease that she signed. Now, as stated in my transmittal to the council and the mayor, instead of filing for damages in court, lawyers have a tendency to do that, thought it'd be much better to bring it to the source, the City of Biloxi is the source, and, uh, have the matter resolved with a new lease. So, we've proposed that, I believe you already have a copy of that. We hope you review it and find it to be fair and equitable for all concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Hingen. Does that conclude your report?
Yes, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Ms. Newman? Thank you, Mr. Demming.
No report. I do, I would like to have a meeting to discuss where we're at with, with Seda LaCap's, uh, Le Cafe issue. I know there's, I read the lease, and I don't know where it sits with regard to the other leases, because I haven't been involved in the whole process. I'm not as much concerned about the, the negotiating aspects or the strength and the market forces that, that created rents, but the breaches do seem to be concerning, and the non-adherence to the leases, you know, via the other tenant. So, I'm extremely concerned to know how we're addressing those breaches of the lease by the, the lower tenant.
That will be the discussion of our executive session here shortly to view that.
Okay.
It would be better positioned.
Well, lastly, I think we should, uh, start a tradition of, of pardoning a shrimp during the, uh, the blessing of the fleet or something.
Okay.
Other than that, nothing else.
Or we could pardon the Ward Four councilman every year at Thanksgiving.
I might need it.
Mr. Barrett?
Very brief, I would just like to remind everyone, December 11th, we'll be having our annual Wilmark at Christmas parade. Encourage everyone to come out to that, and then I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Happy Thanksgiving from Ward Five. Also, based on the mayor's comments earlier, I would like for us to schedule a workshop on this compensation schedule proposal, and our next regularly scheduled meeting is Tuesday, December 7th at 6 o'clock. I would suggest we meet here at 4 o'clock, spend some time with the mayor, reviewing all the details, his reasons, the structure, what the changes will be, what the impact is, uh, at that time. I don't need a motion for that, do we? It'll just, it'll be a workshop, it'll be open to the public, but, uh, can anybody, does that sound all right? Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Gaines, you, you good with that? Ms. Newman? Good with the workshop on December 7th at 4 o'clock to discuss this compensation schedule, which is prior to our council meeting on that day? You good, Mr., with that? Mr. Demming? Mr. Barrett? Okay, good deal. Uh, if the clerk would schedule that, and, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, all right, this time, that concludes the council reports. It brings us to the public agenda. We'll allot three minutes per speaker for anyone who wants to address the council today. It's not a question and answer period, it's for comments. If there's anybody who wishes to address the council, such as Ms. Campbell, then, uh, I'll, I'll call for, to see who's interested on either side of the room, and we'll get you up here. When you come in, when you come in and sit down at the table, please sign in, state your name clearly so that the clerk can record it accurately, and she'll bash you with the magic wand when your three minutes are up. Okay? All right. First, Ms. Campbell.
Hey. Carol Campbell, 347 Big Lake Road, um, Ward Five representative with the Tree Committee, and I'm the vice chair. Just a couple of things. Um, we're anticipating that the second reading for the LDO revisions will be December 7th. Our chair's going to be out of town. One of our members has been hospitalized and may not be up and about by then. I've got another member out of town, and we'd like to request that y'all schedule that for the first Tuesday in January, if possible. We particularly like to, to get that date, or another date after that, after the holidays, so we can have our chair here to, um, answer questions that may come up in the discussion. And then, um, we prepared our comments on the proposed code revisions that we've, um, forwarded to you by email, and we gave you hard copies today, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Anybody else on my left, your right, wish to address the council? Nobody on my left, your right? Anybody on my right, your left, wish to address the council? Let me go back to my left, your right. Ms. LaCap? If you would, please. Thank you.
My name is Seda LaCap, and I reside at 124 Lemieux Street at, um, the Original Beignet Factory, which is where I run my business. And I've been in business since 2012, and since October of last year, I've really been struggling to do what this lease requires, but the city at this point isn't doing their part. The city was to install additional utility meters since September last year, which was also aired on YouTube, and that has not happened since today, which is 14 months down the road, making me liable for the bottom-level tenant's bills. Now, whether if I could afford it or not really isn't the issue, it's just in all fairness, I do think it needs to be corrected. The tenant's kitchen is on the outside in a trailer, which is less than 50 feet away from my business, and it's venting with no vent or diffusing for this kitchen, and the smoke is coming into my business as well. I did receive, um, the city's property tax bills for 2019 and 2020, and this is the time whenever I surrendered my right of refusal in a personal meeting with Peter Abide and, um, Michael Cavanaugh at the time, and I'm still receiving bills for the, uh, city's tax property bills, which are over $18,000. The other tenant has signs all over with flags and chairs, and I have actually sent several requests to, um, Bill Raymond and Jerry Quill in regards to, um, at least trying to set something in place to where we are keeping up with the outside of our building because it is a historic building. At this point, I am struggling to pay the $4,200 per month, while the other tenant is only paying $500, and I don't think that that's fair. And I did spend over $19,000 in renovations, and the city is paying the other tenant $32,000 amount with credits against its rent. The other tenant does have a door which gives them complete control of the elevator entrance to Le Cafe Beignet. Um, I don't feel like that the cafe is secure at night as well. One other issue is the power outages. It's caused a huge havoc to my business at this point, so we do need to have that corrected. I've tried to handle everything by myself, and I've been respectful and courteous and patient as much as I can, and I had to hire Wayne Hingen, but at that point, I had no choice. And he's done a very, he's been very good to me, so he's the only voice that I had at this point, so I do thank you for your consideration in going over this privately with him.
Thank you, Ms. LaCap.
Thank you.
All right, anybody on my right or left, your right or left? Gentlemen in the back. How are you, Derek? You grew a mustache.
I did.
All right.
Good cause.
Wish I could grow a mustache. I can't even grow it for a good cause.
All right. Good afternoon. Can y'all hear me? Weeks back, before the '21-'22 budget was voted on, I discussed with you the Biloxi Firefighters Association's intentions on the longevity issue. The Biloxi Firefighters Association would like to forego a lawsuit and the back pay for longevity, and have the longevity reinstated at the current rate per firefighter. The Biloxi Firefighters Association is asking to have longevity put into an agreement as to not lose it. I'm asking the council and the mayor to vote on our longevity and allow the Biloxi Firefighters Association the ability to negotiate an agreement. In front of you, I have typed out the verbiage to bring to a vote. This same verbiage has come from a legal agreement with the City of Jackson and the Jackson Firefighters Association, and it's in place today. There's a currently, full-recognized firefighter associations within our state. You have Goshay, Pascagoula, Meridian, and Jackson. So, it's, it's not unheard of for us to have one, and I was just, one, I would like for y'all to vote on that today if we could.
Thank you, Derek. If you would, your last name, so the clerk, clerk can get it down accurate.
Eric Gates.
Thank you, Derek.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay. It's not a question and answer period, it's just an opportunity for your counter.
No, sir, that's it.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council? Okay, there being no one, that concludes the public agenda. I'll entertain a motion by Mr. Demming. Yeah, uh, to go into a closed session for the purpose of examining the necessity to go into an executive session to discuss the lease terms for the Beignet Factory. There's a motion by Mr. Demming, a second by Mr. Barrett. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Is there a motion, and hopefully it's the same movers and secunders, it makes it easier on the clerk, is there a motion and a second, uh, that the council conclude the closed session and reconvene as an open meeting? Do we have a motion?
The move.
By Mr. Demming? Second by Mr. Barrett? Any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a 5-0 vote. Thank you. Now, I'll entertain a motion and a second to go into executive session. Thank you, Mr. Demming. And a second by Mr. Barrett.
A six-oh vote or a five-oh vote? Is not someone?
Excuse me, it is a six-oh vote. Thank you. Thank you. You do count. All right. Uh, is there, is there, there's a motion by Mr. Demming and a second by Mr. Barrett to go into executive session. Any discussion? All in favor? It's a six-oh vote. Thank you. And our last motion, uh, I'll need a motion and a second, hopefully by Mr. Demming and Mr. Barrett again. That we conclude the executive session and reconvene as an open meeting, or does they come after the meeting? Okay, thank you. We'll make that motion at that time. All right, at this point, we're going into executive session. Hopefully, we won't be long, uh, but we shall see. Thank you.
[inaudible]
All right, Paul, we got it. You and I, Paul. All right, Paul, we got it. You and I, Paul.
We're doing a workshop before the next meeting about it.
All right, at this point, I'll entertain a motion, hopefully by Mr. Demming, in a second, again, hopefully by Mr. Barrett.
Some moved.
Some moved, in a second by Mr. Barrett, that the council conclude the executive session and reconvene as an open meeting. All those in favor? That's a six oh vote, thank you.
Do we need to do anything else, Gary? We're done.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the policy agenda. If the clerk... Sorry. Let me state for the record, and if it would be noted, that there was no action taken in executive session. Thank you. If the clerk at this time would read the item A, which is a first reading for several ordinances here that are to follow.
Ordinance to amend selected sections of the LDO specifically as it relates to the tree committee, tree permit, and tree protection.
I'll entertain a motion. I'll make that motion, is there a second? Second by Mr. Guns, thank you. All right, that's a first reading. The next item is also a first reading. If the clerk would read item B, please.
Ordinance to amend the zoning district map for two parcels of land from their current zoning of CB community business to PDHB hospitality business master plan for property located at 1845 and 1851 Beach Boulevard.
Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Newman, second by Mr. Lawrence, I believe, is that correct? Thank you. The next item is also a first reading. If the clerk would read item C, please.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning from neighborhood business to RM twenty medium density multi-vehement residential for four parcels of land located at 1850 Pops Ferry Road.
Is there a motion?
I move it.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, is there a second? Second by Mr. Guns, thank you, gentlemen. This last item, item D, is also a first reading. If the clerk would read item D.
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to address compensation schedule pay rates and disbursement of sick leave.
Is there a motion? I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I'll make one second.
Thank you, Mr. Guns. All right, that concludes these first readings. That brings us to the consent agenda.
I'll move it.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second? I'll make that motion. Half of the Beatles, George and Paul. That brings us to any questions on these items. I'll start on my right with Mr. Barrett, no questions. Mr. Demming, any questions on the consent agenda?
I have...
I can come back to you.
You're so organized.
You want me to come back to you now? Thank you. There are, Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. Guns, anything? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, on this one, will you add it?
There were two. Item Q dealt with...
R.
Item R, okay, that's an application, I think, for a grant, I believe. Question Mr. Lawrence has about item R.
I'm trying to be out, we pay this guy a hundred and fifty thousand a year up in Jackson, is he helping or doing any of this stuff with this, trying to get this money for this bridge? Keith Stewart, I mean, we pay him a ton of money, is he involved in this at all?
Keith Hurd, okay.
Who's doing this for us?
Which item are you talking to, Ken?
Talking about item R, which was added to the agenda.
Oh, that was added.
I believe there was a Scrivener's error in there.
What's wrong with it? Can't hear? Let me tell you, this is a no-brainer. Probably be able to create this money from Homeland Security. We have Kessler, we have a reason to evacuation route, there's no reason for us not being able to get this money. And we paying all these people, it's supposed to be having help.
Yeah, RR doesn't have anything to do with Kessler, it has to do with the Cedar Lake Bridge.
Say again? I know.
RR Romeo is the Cedar Lake Bridge. And this is a ask and permission to proceed with a grant request. Which they already approved.
R was approved, and it dealt with the scope of the work, and also an environmental impact statement, I think, was being paid for with this grant.
Would be.
Would be, and it mentioned the Scrivener's error to correct the amount of that grant to five hundred and sixty-two thousand, is that accurate?
That's accurate, it's just a change to the original amount that was... It's a, you know, five hundred dollars off of...
Right, so we're applying for the grant, we're just correcting the error in the amount of the grant.
Point, that is an estimate, it's nothing more than an estimate of what we thought that think the value of the grant would be.
Okay.
The grant is a request with, through FEMA, and we're in discussion with them, with their hazard mitigation people. This brick grant would give us money to proceed with design and environmental impact analysis that all leads to, which, just like we've done for the Pops Ferry Bridge.
Right. Does that answer your question, Mr. Lawrence?
It's just a five hundred dollar miscue in our estimate of the federal share.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
That was it.
That was it. Two items for me, on item N deals with the GOMESA funding for capital project ten thirty-three, that's the Bayview waterfront restoration project. It mentions a phase one and phase two that currently runs basically there at the launch by the tee pier west of Kensington, if I'm correct. Is that phase one and phase two, or... I just wanted to be clear on that, it's not, that's both phases, the entire run of that project there.
Correct.
Okay, that's good. And on item P, just to ask my colleagues up here on this side of the desk, that deals with the calendar for council meetings. Everybody's comfortable with this? I made a few notes, just because I'm not wild about changing council meeting dates later in the year, and I know sometimes when it gets close to holidays, we want to move council meetings, particularly if we're trying to be somewhere, but I also know that some of us set our schedule based on these council meetings, and it kind of messes up your life if we change a council meeting. So, any items you want to look at, or any items you want to discuss on that, otherwise we'll adopt the dates as they're presented.
I personally would like to see the November and the December, the first, second, and third week, and that way, if people are traveling during Christmas and Thanksgiving, it doesn't affect them that week.
All right, so your preference is that in November, we move the meeting of November twenty-second to the twenty-ninth?
Now, the first, the eighth, and the fifteenth, or the first, the fifteenth, and the twenty-ninth, either way, because you have a lot of people that travel during Thanksgiving, and then the same thing during Christmas, possibly do that the first, second, and third, instead of the first, third, and fourth.
Let me ask Mr. Leonard, if we go for two and a half or three weeks without a council meeting, based on holidays, if we move some meeting dates around, does that present any issues in terms of finance or payroll?
The real problem is the docket.
Right.
Rarely are these policy things going to hurt to slide a little bit. The problem is getting a docket out and not having to go past net forty and pay fees to people for being late, or to not pay our power bill and have the power shut off, or not paying our gas bill and have the gas fuel man, we have to be very careful about the can, if nothing else, you have a meeting just to approve the docket. And all we need is four people, four of you people.
Right, okay.
And that would take care of the real problem.
All right, so if we look, Mr. Barrett's point was, if we looked at the first, the eighth, and the fifteenth, correct, Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, it's just really close to Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Right, but that would mean we wouldn't have a council meeting between November fifteenth and December sixth in two thousand and twenty-two. I mean, and, Mr. Leonard, right off the top of your head, I'm thinking, what's got to get paid, what has to be in motion, what has to be approved, and how moving that particular date? Ms. Thornton may know.
Yeah, Diana, we had some conversation about restructuring, when people get what, if you want to come out and give us where we talked about it on Monday morning meeting, so everyone knows, those bills that need to be paid, like the fuel man and some of those other things, explain what we talked about earlier.
We are making a change in December to have two dockets a month, where the first meeting will pay all utilities, and the second meeting will pay all other bills. Utilities can be included on that second docket as well.
Let's look at, because this is a good example that Mr. Barrett has raised, in November of twenty-two, currently, we scheduled the first, the second, and the fourth Tuesday, excuse me, the first, the third, and the fourth Tuesday, which is November first, fifteenth, and twenty-second. Twenty-second is part of the Thanksgiving holidays. Mr. Barrett is suggesting that we might consider the first, the eighth of November, and the fifteenth of November, which means...
Our docket would be on the first and the fifteenth.
Right, but what that means is there would be no council meeting from the sixteenth until December sixth. Does that impact...
January. Because we're going to be doing the...
We're talking November.
The second meeting is always usually the third Tuesday.
Right.
So if you had the first and the fifteenth, that would be the first and the third Tuesday, so that's fine.
That's good. Now, if we went and looked at December, so November would work out if we went the first, the eighth, and the fifteenth, and if you look at December, you've got the sixth, we skip the thirteenth, second Tuesday... the 13th, second Tuesday, the 20th, and the 27th. What if we went, say, the 6th, the 13th, and the 20th? Does that present a problem?
That would work as well.
Okay, so we could do that in November and December. Do my colleagues have any thoughts on that? Do you have any preference?
I've got a, let me look. I just scheduled a trial for that week in December of next year, but I may just have to miss that meeting. If you guys choose to go the 13th, do we get the 13th?
Only whatever everyone else prefers.
I understand.
I'm okay with that. I think we should move the 15th meeting, because that interferes with the November 16th holiday. It's my birthday.
Well, there's, there's, there's no lilo discussion on changing any dates, and we seem to have meandered off into...
Birthdays.
Different discussions and birthdays. Okay, I'll accept a motion to approve the city council meeting schedule for year 2022 as presented, is there? We've already got the motion and the second. All right, no notes there. That concludes my comments, as ill-fated as they were. That brings us to a vote on the consent agenda. All in favor of the items as presented on the consent agenda? That's approved on a... There we go, that's a six oh vote. Thank you, Mr. Demming, you are now the parliamentarian. We still have a couple of code enforcement hearings to go. Are there any exceptions to the consent agenda? Everybody's good with it, thank you. That brings us... Go ahead, not a problem. All right, that brings us to code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel.
Always on time, always punctual for these hearings, thank you, sir. We'll open hearing, Item A, Robert and Lynn, Flint Basket, this is for 450 Drive. Mr. Creel.
This property is still in violation, but I'd like to ask for 30 days. We've been notified by the mortgage company. The people have abandoned the property, and the mortgage company has sent us a notice that they're going to take care of the code violations.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for a 30-day extension.
I'll make the motion.
By Mr. Barrett, is there a second? Second by Ms. Newman, thank you. All in favor? That's a five oh vote. That concludes that hearing. The next hearing, Item B, Brian Chevalier, or Chevalier, depending on where you're from and how you pronounce it, 231 Nixon Street. Mr. Creel.
This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on the matter of 231 Nixon Street? Is anyone here representing Brian Chevalier or Chevalier? There being no one, this hearing is concluded. Next item, Qui and Anthony Cannard, on the matter of 251 Iroquois Street. Mr. Creel.
This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on the matter of 251 Iroquois Street? Or, all right, if, sure, please come up, and if you would, take a moment to sign in, your name and address, then state your name clearly for the clerk, and then you can sort of explain where you are on this property.
Okay, my name is Anthony Cannard, and it's regarding the 251 Iroquois Street. I'm the owner. I just got a little bit hot behind between cleaning up this property and another property. I had some cash flow issues from COVID renters and whatnot, but I didn't get any notice or anything. I just happened to have a neighbor call me up and say, there's a sign out in front of my house. I didn't realize it had gotten that far, that bad, so as soon as I found out, I went, been working on it, cleaned up most of the yard and everything, and I plan to actually do a major renovation to the house in the next month. So, I mean, it's from the street, and you see from there, it's significantly different than when it was, I guess, sited or whatever, so, I mean, it's being worked on, it's just I need, I'm only one person, so.
So if you needed additional time, how much time might you be requesting?
Well, I'm not sure what else is still in violation, other than some, I need to go through one side of the house, pick up some of the branches and garbage and whatnot from the, there was like a major storm that had damaged an oak tree next to it, and there was a lot of branches and whatnot, I'm still trying to get that cleaned up. So I don't know what other, I tried calling the number on the sign, but nobody would ever answer, so I don't know what other code enforcement, code violations there are. I don't have any notice or anything.
Mr. Creel, can you give us an update, or is there anything further to add?
Well, these pictures were taken yesterday, so you can see that there's overgrowth, and there's trash and litter around the outside, there's trash on the roof, the harness is beginning to deteriorate, so there are a number of violations, but if the council wants to give Mr. Cannard 30 days, I'll be happy to meet with him at my office and talk with him about what needs to be done. Okay, I'll move the 30 days.
One second.
All right, so there's a motion by Mr. Guns, and a second by Ms. Newman, for a 30-day extension. Any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a five oh vote, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cannard. Do you know Mr. Creel?
I do.
Okay, well, meet Mr. Creel.
Okay.
That brings us to the routine agenda. I'll accept a motion, if there's one out there.
I'll second.
By Mr. Lawrence, and a second by Mr. Guns. Okay, Mr. Lawrence.
Who's going to give us the update? Money time. Some Thanksgiving news.
Well, we're going to be on a little bit of a diet for at least a couple more weeks, councilmen. MEMA is currently processing a little over 735.6,000. It is not in their software website yet, but we are still more than 60 days in advance to be able to pay all of our invoices and pay apps, so we'll be reaching back out to them and see, we'll be putting that in.
We're still ahead of the game, correct?
Yes, sir, at least 60 days.
That's good. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Roden.
Thank you.
All in favor of the routine agenda as presented? It's approved on a five oh vote. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
By Mr. Lawrence, second by, I think, Mr. Guns.
Gary.
All in favor, it's approved on a vote of one to nothing.